Committee reports. Raton Water Works, Mayor Protem Sagata.
Well, Commissioner Chavez takes the notes on this one and Mr. Campbell, I don't see him, so I'm gonna have to pass on this report tonight.
Mayor, I could make some comments on that item since we are lacking a member. There are two things that the Water Board had recently talked about. Number one, they're required to prepare a consumer confidence report that talks about water quality issues and make that available to the public. That is prepared. It was published in the June 22 edition of the Werfino World Journal. It will be on the city website July 1st. And if someone is interested, they can pick up a copy of that consumer confidence report at the office here immediately. So that information is available and it's required annually. It's a routine issue. I would say that I reviewed that before the meeting and the water quality is very high in Raton as it is every year. But that is available to the public and they can, they're welcome to pick up a copy or look at that online. The second thing, Mayor, the Water Board did approve a task order to the engineering firm AECOM. They will begin an evaluation of the service spillway at Lake Maloya. That's the concrete chute that's in the middle of the dam on the embankment. And really just based on the California issue with the dam and a similar type situation where there was a problem related to that type of spillway, the Water Board has decided to do an evaluation of it and have a professional look at the condition of it and report back. So that work will take place when the lakes, when the spilling of that spillway subsides. So right now, there's about a half an inch of water going over the spillway. And when that subsides, and we don't know when that might be, it might be a while till that happens, we'll schedule the work then. The work will consist on some borings on the spillway. The spillway is a concrete chute. Some sounding of that and evaluation of concrete reinforcement, seepage on the potential seepage on that, that kind of thing. So it may be a while till we hear back about that, but that's gonna go forward. And those are the two issues that I have.
Thank you. Raton Public Service, Commissioner Jacomo?
Madam Mayor, tonight we have Mr. Olman, RPS General Manager. He's gonna give us an update on the unit, sixth unit.
Commissioners, I'm happy to report that the Jimbacher is almost complete at this time. We're hoping to be completed by this Friday, but we've had some emission things that came up at the last minute, just about 30 minutes ago. So we've had to postpone taking acceptance of it at this time, but they're getting the parts down to us, but it's just a small issue at this time. I'd like to report that we've been operating all this month. We have produced about 458,000 kilowatts for the city of Raton. We ran both in parallel most of the month. And we had one night this week that we did a complete blackout to do our island testing and it turned out very successful. I'd like to commend Dave P. Encino and the RPS crew for standing by and what they did during the commissioning in this island mode. They did a fantastic job of backing up the system and we had no cutouts of the engine or blackouts of lost circuits, which was excellent. And that's what we wanted. We will continue this process. It looks like it's gonna be the week of the 10th of July that they'll finish their emissions testing and it'll be signed over to us at that time. But things are moving along. We do have a little bit of a ventilation problem that we're fixing at this time, but we'll have it resolved by this time. So things are looking good. So hopefully next month, we'll be able to report to you that it's up and running. We wanna, we actually do wanna run it for the next six months because it is under warranty. We are working with Twin Eagle, our source of power at this time, to allow us to operate this unit. It's critical that our team get a good knowledge of how this thing operates and so when we do lose power, RPS is ready to go. And that's the one thing that we're working for. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Thank you for your input.
Thank you. Senior Citizens Board, Commissioner Chavez isn't here. Do you have anything, Neil?
Sure. Approaching the year end, getting ready for fiscal year 17. We have agreements to operate alongside with Raton, Simroon, and Springer. We are taking on the wagon mound and more senior centers this year. In fact, I will be in Mora tomorrow evening for their county commission meeting to sign agreements for that. Other than that, business as usual and things are looking pretty good.
Thank you.
We got, we can get our hot water problem solved for the time being.
That's good.
That's always good. We have hot water, yes.
Planning and Zoning Commission, Commissioner Schuster?
There's been no meetings, so there's no report.
Housing Authority, Commissioner Schuster?
The Housing Authority met on June 20th. During that meeting, they voted on and approved Resolution 538, tenant bad debt write-offs that they have to deal with every year. Resolution 539, adopt revisions to operating budget per fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016. Closed executive session pursuant 10-15-8 for personnel issues, employee annual reviews. They returned to session. The matters, the minutes reflected that there was nothing disclosed but what was announced. No decisions were made. They approved and discussed the wage increases for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017. Reviewed the operating budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017. Resolution 540, adopted operating budget for their fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017. They approved the summer food budget, which the summer food program has already begun and it will go through, I believe, the beginning of August, into the first week of August. Mr. Baca attended the NERO, NHRO Regional Meeting in San Antonio where regulations were reviewed and also common findings were reviewed. And I believe we have an issue that we'll talk about. Is that correct? With the money damages owed to the Housing Authority? Will we be talking about that later or no?
I am not sure. We are still.
Apparently, we'll be talking about that at a different.
Okay.
Mr. Baca was gonna talk to Michael Ann about a certain project there. They're gonna be able to get some money back and may need some paperwork passed through the city.
ETZ Zoning Commission, Mayor Protem Sagata has not met. Arts and Culture Board, no report. North Central New Mexico Economic Development District, no report. Library Advisory Board, Commissioner Jacomo?
There was no meeting out this month.
ETZ Zoning Authority, no report. Financial Advisory Board. Do you have something for us, Michael Ann or?
Actually, the Financial Advisory Committee met last Thursday and reviewed our financial report for approval by the commission this evening. So that'll be Item F of tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Approval of the June 13, 2017, regular commission meeting minutes, June 20, 2017, special commission meeting minutes, and the June 26, special commission meeting minutes. On the June 13 meeting, I found two corrections. Under number four, it says regular commission meeting Tuesday, June 2017 at 6:00 PM. It should be June 27. And under Item J, the first bullet, NMFA refund to the city, the excess interim interest applied to our loan. It says about, it should be amount after the loan was paid off. Does anyone have anything else?
I don't think so.
I don't think. I'm to approve the minutes as amended.
All second.
With a motion and a second, to approve the minutes of the June 20 special commission meeting minutes and the June 26 special committee meeting minutes and the regular commission meeting minutes, as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliverate and act on an MOU between the City of Raton and Raton Public Schools for the school resource officer. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, we've talked about the funding of a school resource officer for several years now. There is in place a grant with Department of, US Department of Justice to fund the school resource officer. And the issue has been for several years, the staffing of that. So what we wanna talk about with the commission tonight is not only the financial part of that, but also the staffing. And so we have on hand School Superintendent Andy is here to address the schools part of that. Chief Garcia is here to address the staffing issue. But in general, we've had, what would be required to go forward is a memorandum of understanding between the city and the school. And in past years where we've approached the school, there is a matching component. And I left my grant sitting on the desk there, but we do have it here. Yeah, actually, I've got it. Thank you. Matching amount that is required in year one, and this is a three-year funding requirement that we are looking at, but the first year would be $29,097 and some cents. And the school, of course, has had a, really a financial challenge in which they've been forced to riff a number of teachers. And so that's one of the issues is coming up with the matching funds. And so I'm here tonight to address the commission to see if the city would provide that funding in year one. We don't know what happens in year two or three, but we would be committing to a year two or three. And talk to the schools again and I would maybe ask the School Superintendent for his comments, but the word that we got is the school is not gonna be able to participate in this funding in year one. And so the, I think if we're looking at funding this position, it's gonna be out of reserves. And then you'd have a similar amount. There are some fluctuation on the amounts in year two or three, but basically the same amount. I think the total required match is in excess of $87,000. And then the Department of Justice will provide their end of the grant funds, which is, I believe, over $100,000 they'll be bringing to the project. And it would be to fund the school resource officer for three years. Now, the school resource officer is a Raton city police officer and we anticipate that it would work this way. We would assign an experienced officer, a certified officer, to fill the role of the SRO. And then in turn, we would hire an entry level officer. And the issue there is the challenge of running the department with an additional entry level person and being minus the certified officer. And so if I can suggest this, Mayor, I'd like to call Chief Garcia forward to make comments on the challenge with staffing this. And then I'd like to call Mr. Ortiz forward to talk about, you know, the school's position on this. And in the end, we're asking the commission for an action to fund this position going forward. The alternative to this would be to turn the grant back to Department of Justice. We're at the end now where we really need to take action on that, this issue this year and put an SRO in the school starting in August and make preparations for that. And if we don't do that, we're out of time on the grant. And so we've had a couple of extensions on this grant, but now we're at the end of our potential for extensions. And so I think it's a point where we wanna make a decision. Now, I don't, I don't, I'm not saying that that absolutely has to occur tonight from the commission. We could probably come back, you know, but it's not far off until we really have to have this in place and probably respond to Department of Justice. So Chief Garcia, I don't know if you could come forward and address this.
Mayor and Commissioner, Mr. Manager. Like the city manager let in, staffing is always an issue with us. Had a brief conversation with him earlier, told him that we've been trying to fill this position for the last four years. It's not for a lack of trying, it's attrition, people leaving, coming, going. We had Mr. Vincent in the school who worked out really well with Mr. Ortiz. Unfortunately, he wanted to go back to Colorado. There was never a backfill hire to fill in his position, so there was never any draw on the grant. I do have an officer who is interested in the position. He's definitely interested. He wants to be in the schools. He had a few questions for me prior to the meeting. I straightened him out on that, but he is interested. Now, I have to keep the entire city's best interest in mind. With that certified officer going off, that leaves us with a total of four uncertifieds. I have three that are required to go to the academy in January, which really kicks us in the pants. And then I have one female officer who is being deployed to Dubai until May of next year. So we'll be in a pinch. If we put this officer in the schools, he will remain dedicated to the schools. Or we may use a modified schedule where he's there Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or something of that sort to where we can still use him on the street to help cover shifts. It's gonna be extremely difficult to run a two-man, two 12-hour shifts. I'm required to have eight men. With taking at least five away and having a rookie that's not really any good to us for the first year just because of training and the academy, it'd be extremely difficult. But I do see a dire need for it in the schools. I think it is, it's extremely important, but it will, again, be difficult to staff. So if you have any other questions, I'll be more happy to fill them.
Just the, does the grant allow you to do like a split schedule?
I'm not too sure. The letter of law on that grant requires a full-time, but it's something we can look into, ma'am.
So I'm understanding what you're saying. You're saying it's gonna be very difficult, but you still recommend it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
I do. It is a definite need in the schools and I think there was a big difference when Mr. Vincent was in there. It's just, we're gonna be struggling on the back end of covering our shift.
And while they're in the schools, could you explain exactly what they, they're not just there to keep kids from doing bad, obviously.
No, they're not there for any disciplinary measures that a school may take. They're there for law enforcement action only and also to interact with the kids, to put on classes for them. Nothing administrative, everything will be taken care of by Mr. Ortiz.
Also, many times when we had Mr. Vincent last year, we wanted him to get outside, meet and greet our community, get to know the kids. We, in the schools, especially at the high school, we do call officers there a lot when we have fights and other things that happen. So there's such a negativity towards our police officers that it really becomes a community thing where we can try to educate our young students, educate our older students that these gentlemen are out here to protect and to serve. And one of the things that I see in our community that is lacking is most of our, most of our students have had negative experiences with police officers. So when they see a police officer, it's more fright or you, you've done something to my family member or whatever. So in an educational persona, it really makes a difference to have an officer present in the schools. We've even had officers, I've even asked Officer Garcia, that if you can't have an officer like that in our schools, an SRO, you know, even having officers come and visit the schools once in a while, I know they're busy, they're backlogged. We also did have an agreement with John the last time we had Officer Vincent, is if there's something detrimental in the city where that officer has to leave the schools and take care of the city, the city is first. And so those are, those are some things that we really wanna look at in partnering up with our police officers.
And just a couple of comments here. I have the grant agreement. So the amounts are, over the three-year term, the total is $212,293 and the federal share is $125,000. The applicant share is $87,293. The COPS office, and COPS stands for Community Oriented Policing Services, that's an office in the US Department of Justice. The COPS office requires that the officer deployed into the school resource officer position spend a minimum of 75% of their time in and around primary and/or secondary schools, working on youth-related activities. So that's the number, 75%.
75%.
And we're working with Officer Vincent, and he was here. I was principal at Longfield at the time, and I was really starting to get into some ideas with him getting into classrooms and doing a lot of educational stuff with our students. So I think that's what we wanna see with the officer that comes into our schools. Not just to be there to be a presence, it's there to educate, to try to communicate and really get to know the students and the kids and the community better and maybe we would have a better relationship with everyone in the community.
It sounds like a very positive program to me.
We would commit to hiring a new officer, an entry level officer, for three years plus one additional year after the funding is terminated. That's what we're.
Right, that's what you have to do. What are you gonna do when you have three officers in school being certified?
It's gonna be difficult. We'll be four down. If we happen to hire an entry level, we may have an out on the street by then, which would catch us up a little bit and possibly let us cover our shifts, but it will be difficult, ma'am.
And we can also alternate that schedule at 75%. We'll give him the 25% and say, do the best you can. We can help it as much as possible.
Do you have any applicants on the horizon?
There are a few, obviously.
Any experienced?
No. I could probably look elsewhere to other agencies, but it may be someone that had been here before and left for a good reason. Not to, not to mention, you can account for people that may leave, but I have an officer who's constantly filling out applications, just for you all talking about. He's always on looking out and looking for bigger and better. There's one officer that I'm 95% sure who's about to turn in his resignation. So you never can account for that, plus we have to throw that in as well. So it will be difficult.
And we've been through the process before. Last year, we were outside and we finally had the money. Well, we, the last three or four years, we've had the money, but no staffing to get someone on. And so when we lost Officer Vincent, we knew that he was understaffed and we understand that too. And priority comes to our city, but it would be nice to have an SRO in the schools also.
And I think Chief would verify that we have an officer responding to school issues quite frequently.
Absolutely. I see the need for, one of my concerns would be morale among your men, especially come January, and that it's, that's my only hesitation. We've put an awful lot of stress on these guys already. The job itself puts an awful lot of stress on the guys. That's just my hesitation. I really don't want to add to their worries.
Some of our officers have been working twelve shifts for quite a stretch.
Yes.
It gets to be long days. We went back to our schedule and they absolutely hated it, so we went back to twelve. But statistics will show you that twelves are on your officers more than he should.
Absolutely.
The three officers that go to Santa Fe, how long will they be gone?
Four months, from January to the end of April. And then the deployed officer will be gone starting August till the end of May, so the entire school year. Once we get all of them back, they'll be in great shape, but it's gonna be a thin stretch through that.
Well, I would lean on the expertise of Chief Garcia and our city manager. Chief feels he can go with this, I would make a motion then that we adopt the MOU between the City of Raton and the Raton School District.
All second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the MOU between the City of Raton and Raton Public Schools for a school reserve officer. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Schuster? Yes. Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sagata?
Yes.
Mayor Metz? Yes.
So Mayor, we'll now send the agreement with your signature to the school board and they'll consider that, I think, at their next.
Yes, we'll put that on the next agenda.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks, gentlemen.
And Madam Mayor, are you rocking, recipient is in the audience? So whenever you're ready, we'll let that in.
Go back and do that.
Okay.
We have an award tonight. It's a You Rock Award. Mr. Schuster?
Mrs.?
She's a lady. At times.
At times. The Mayor and City Commissioner of Raton proudly present a certificate of recognition to Sofia Ortiz in acknowledgement of her unwavering efforts to be an outstanding citizen and a true ambassador of Raton. And this, I have to say, this woman is extremely humble and tried to turn it down and I told her that you can't, you can't do that many good things and turn it down. She worked really hard at coordinating and initiating and coordinating the volunteer program with our visitor center and many of the volunteers expressed to me that she deserved being recognized. So Sofia Ortiz, you rock.
Deliverate and act on road closure with the VFW Fourth of July Street Dance. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, the event is a street dance that would involve the closure of a portion of Park Avenue. That's in front of the VFW building from the alley to First Street. Would take place on July 4th, 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. It has been reviewed by our staff and we recommend approval of the permanent event.
See all the paperwork's in order. I'll make a motion to approve road closure, VFW Fourth of July Street Dance.
All second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the road closure for the VFW Fourth of July Street Dance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliverate and act on grant agreement number 16-419-150231-608 between the City of Raton and the State of New Mexico Economic Development Department, Main Street, for a capital of. and the State of New Mexico Economic Development Department, Main Street, for a capital appropriation project, Great Blocks Phase 1 and 2 construction. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, for some time now, City of Raton has worked with Raton Main Street and New Mexico Main Street in the development of the Great Blocks project, and we've talked extensively about the project. It has potentially broken up into two phases, if funding requires that to be phased. And I think it's the goal of all of those parties, including the city, to build the project in its entirety. So, there is an appropriation that has been made to the project, and there's been a couple of, a couple of steps on that. Originally, New Mexico Main Street told the City of Raton that the funding was in the amount of $320,000, and then a $90,000 match would be required from the City of Raton, and the city commission did agree to that. But $60,000 of the grant fund, the grant funds were frozen during the legislative session. So, the grant agreement that was previously approved by the commission was for the amount of $260,000 state money and $90,000 City of Raton. Since then, the $60,000 that was frozen is, now we've been informed, available to the project. But since we have already approved a grant agreement for the $260,000, there's a separate grant agreement for the $60,000. So, that's what you have in front of you. It's funding that we had anticipated previously, but it was unknown. So, this is the state's commitment to you, that the $60,000 is available. Our match on that portion of the project is still 90K. So, that brings us to a little over $400,000 of funding that's in hand for a project that's estimated to cost about $1 million. So, we have been talking to some people at the U.S. Department of Commerce about their EDA program for potential funding, and we're still in that process. And we'll have to make some decisions whether we ultimately phase it and do the part of the work that's funded. There are some deadlines on some of our funding and state funding that's in place, or if it'll work with the EDA process in a timely manner. So, we're working on that, and I'll report back to the commission. But good news on the grant agreement in front of you, and recommend approval of that.
Questions for Mr. Berry?
No problem that we accept a grant agreement. Number 16-419-150231-1608 between the City of Raton and the State of New Mexico Economic Development Department, Main Street, for capital appropriation projects, Great Blocks Phase 1 and Phase 2 construction. No kidding?
And I'm not going to say it all again. We have a motion and a second to approve the capital appropriation projects between the City of Raton and New Mexico Economic Development Department, Main Street, Great Blocks Phase 1 and Phase 2 construction. We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Metz?
Yes. And pray that other grant comes through. Everybody pray. Deliverate an act on resolution 2017-31, budget adjustment number 15, fiscal year 17.
Mayor and Commissioner, I've provided you with the corrected copy, and I've highlighted the corrections that I made. The adjusted amounts to the far right did not change, it's just the actual budget to the adjusted budget figures. The general fund, we're just doing line item adjustments, utilizing some salary, not salary savings, but just savings that we had in other line items throughout the year. This is just to get us through the end of the fiscal year. And then, in our fire grants, we did have some additional revenues that we received for the various responses to fires that they've been to throughout the year. So, we're going to take those revenues and allocate some of that revenue to the various line items that the fire chief has in the fire grants. And then, in the fire fund, the same thing, we had some additional interests that we earned that wasn't budgeted, and we're going to allocate that amongst those line items. In the lodgers tax fund, I discovered that there was a typo in the budget. The Raton Arts and Humanities Council was actually awarded $11,500, so that's just a correction to this year's budget. And then, in the EMS fund, we do have some revenues coming in for the sale of ambulance, but those revenues won't be received until after the end of the fiscal year. So, after talking with the fire chief, we're going to, this was actually an adjustment we had at the last meeting, because I thought the money was coming in, but he has some additional miscellaneous revenue from CPR classes this year, and then we'll also do a transfer from the fire grants monies to cover his additional medical supply expenses for this fiscal year. But we will realize that additional income from the sale of the property in the next fiscal year. Other than that, the street improvement fund, the Raton Water Department did reimburse us half of a purchase of some cold mix. This was actually a purchase that was made earlier in the year. We just completed some projects this past week, and we'll be invoicing Raton Water Works again for their portion on those projects. But this was some revenue that we had earlier in the year that we're going to apply to the construction expense that's already occurred. Other than that, everything else was just line item adjustments. Is there any questions? We'll probably just have one final adjustment next month. The deadline to submit that will be July 31st with the final budget and the final end-of-year reports.
Make up a motion that we approve resolution number 2017-31, budget adjustment number 15 for fiscal year 17.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2017-31, budget adjustment number 15, fiscal year 17. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliverate an act on resolution 2017-32, May 2017 financial report.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening is the May financial report. As you will see, we did receive the final June gross receipts tax distribution, and it was a fairly good check, so it's going to leave us with a 4.8% increase this fiscal year per what was budgeted. And as we've talked in the past, we kind of had a 4% deficit last year, so we're coming out just a little bit ahead in making up for the shortfall, which also will help cover some of the shortfall that we saw this year with our small cities assistance. But in addition to that, we've been able to do a good job of minimizing expenditures with all of our departments. Everybody's done a really good job, so you'll see that our revenues exceed our expenses, and so that's always good. Going into the next fiscal year, we are budgeting a 3% decline in GRT, so we will be monitoring that closely as we move forward into the next fiscal year to make sure that we're meeting those budget projections. And if we see that we're not, then we'll have to start having some discussions on that. But talking about the final budget, we have one more meeting really in July where we could have some discussion on the budget, and then the final budget would be presented to you at the second meeting in July. So, if you've had some time to review that, or want to sit down with me and look it over, we've got some time. But if there's changes and things that need to be made, we probably should be discussing it within the first couple of weeks of July. And then, we will submit all of that, including the final end-of-year reports, by the July 31st deadline. Other than that, we really only have about three days left in this fiscal year, so, you know, in addition to GRT, our lodgers tax revenues year-to-date have also exceeded projections. And I'm not sure, at your meeting last week, did you have like a certain percentage that they're above the previous year? Do you know right offhand?
Actually, for this month, I think it was a little bit lower.
For this month, it went down.
For this month.
But year-to-date, I would say it's easily 10% above.
At the loss.
So, I think with gas prices remaining relatively low, this should be a good summer as well. I know the NRA's had some large national events that are drawing a lot of people to towns, so it should be good. So, other than that, the city manager and I'll be doing the reimbursement of the temporary transfers that we did throughout the year. Those will be done this week before the end of the fiscal year. So, you know, the ending cash balance that we're showing in the general fund will probably increase easily another $200,000. But as you know, June, we have a lot of expenses hit in the month of June, because it is the end of the fiscal year, but I do see us closing out the fiscal year definitely ahead and within budget. So, I think all of our departments are doing really well, trying to stay within budget, and our monthly department head meetings have really helped. So, doing monthly budget adjustments, and I think we're doing a good job in that respect, monitoring the budget. Is there any questions that anybody had on the report that I've provided you?
Looks like you've been very busy, so I haven't...
I'll move to approve the May 13, or May 31st, 2017 fiscal report, resolution 2017-31.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2017-32, May 2017 financial report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliverate an act on an agreement between the City of Raton and Raton Firefighters Local 2378. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet you have an agreement between Raton Firefighters Local 2378 and the City of Raton. It is an agreement that is proposed for two years, effective July 1st of 2017, and the elements in the agreement have been tentatively agreed to by the negotiating parties. However, at this point, I had anticipated that a vote by the local would have taken place, and we would have an affirmative vote on their part, and the vote has not taken place. I've been informed by the local that they are not able to vote on it in time for this meeting. We would anticipate they will be able to get together and vote on it later in the week. That puts us back to some meeting in July, if the contract is ratified by their membership. So, if it happens like we're hearing, according to the schedule, we'll consider this again at the July 11th meeting, and of course, then the dates are slightly altered. But, yeah, I think to the commission, I would recommend that we postpone action on this, consideration on this, until the membership pairs as voted.
We have a motion to rat that...
I'll make a motion to postpone this voting.
One second.
We have a motion and a second to postpone the agreement between the City of Raton and the Raton Firefighters Local 2378 until the firefighters have had an opportunity to vote on the agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliverate an act and recommendation from the Lodgers Tax Advisory Board. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, you do have a memorandum in front of you regarding the Lodger Tax Advisory Board meeting of June 21st, 2017. The board's recommendation is that $8,000 be awarded to the Center for Sustainable Community to be used for digital marketing services for the fiscal 18 budget. And you have that recommendation, but if I could, Mayor, I'd really like to recommend that we invite Jeff Peterson to come to the podium and give you more details on this. This is a pretty exciting option, I think, that I can't do justice on, but I'd sure like Mr. Peterson and Ms. Jessica to give you the information on that. Thank you.
So, again, yes, I'm Jeff Peterson, Executive Director for the Center for Sustainable Community, and Jessica Barfield, the Education and Marketing Coordinator for the Center. And so, we'd like to present the background information for the proposal we made to the Lodgers Tax with regard to digital marketing services. I've got a packet in front of you where Page 1 describes the sort of scope of work for the project, and then some subsequent pages that we'll walk you through pretty quickly to describe the project. The objectives we outlined for the Lodgers Tax Board was to, were to improve the digital marketing services for Raton. So, the scope of work includes the Explore Raton website, and then another really intriguing and exciting package that the Center has started to work with. Recently, Jessica worked with Google to have the Center awarded a grant from Google whereby the Center can execute advertising through Google on behalf of the Center and for the scope of work of the Center. And it has to be nonprofit, but part of our scope of work for the Center is the promotion of Raton, and the promotion to attract not only residents but tourists to Raton, and of course, many other aspects of the work we do. So, we have started to use this Google product to advertise for Raton, and Jessica will walk through some details there. But bottom line is, we've really taken a very collaborative approach with this. We're working with the Main Street Group, we're working with the Chamber, and trying to coordinate the promotion of events and activities, and of course, lodgers, right, with the heads in beds mantra that we hear. So, let me walk you through just a few key things that I wanted to point out. One, let's talk briefly about numbers, and some definitions. So, we believe that with this grant, we will achieve 200,000 advertising impressions per month. So, this is views of a Raton ad. And of those 200,000 impressions per month, we should get 5,000 people clicking into something about Raton, lodging, or events, or something about related to Raton. We're also going to pursue Facebook advertising in conjunction with this, and use our Google AdWords, which is, this is free advertising to us. We're not, there's not really a cash exchange, but we get a credit with Google to run these ads with Google on a monthly basis. Okay? So, those are a lot of numbers. I mean, those are a lot of advertising impressions and clicks. And so, to help illustrate that, there's this little diagram that I pulled from some presentation that talks about advertising impressions, and then what clicks are. So, advertising impressions are simply, when you do a face, when you go into Google and you do some search term, some search, and the page fills up with those results, all of those are considered impressions. And then, when you click on one, then of course, that's the click. So, we're talking about 200,000 impressions and 5,000 clicks to Raton activities. On the next page, there's an example of the work we've been able to do so far. So, there's a hot air balloon, little screenshot, so where I typed in "New Mexico Balloon Fiesta" Festival, and you can see that top one says "Ad" next to it with "Sustain Raton, Fourth of July Weekend." And below Raton's Balloon Fiesta Festival is the Albuquerque International Balloon Fiesta. This is the type of power that the Google AdWords can do for us, is when we can find scenes in advertising like that, where, well, that Albuquerque... where, well, that Albuquerque Balloon Fiesta, they're so popular, they don't really need to use AdWords, but we can hop in there and get an ad, advertising to their customers, basically. So we're developing strategies to do this in lots of different ways, geographically. And there's lots of cool things that Jessica's going to talk to about the ways that Google advertising can be used. And it's a pretty neat technology. We're pretty excited about it. And Jessica's really been studying hard and really becoming quite the expert on this. I'll turn this over to Jessica.
All right, so, you know, Jeff was just talking about numbers. And I think the number one important thing to remember whenever you're looking at Google AdWords is the power of the information that we get. I can tell you through the analytics that we get from Google exactly where everyone is seeing our ads, the people who are responding to our ads, the age group, the demographic information of those people. And that's really, really neat whenever you look at this. And so Jeff had just talked about some really big numbers, about the number of people we expect to see these ads. Well, we've been running ads. And so we can kind of show you some initial results here. So on the next page, we have the results so far for the month of June. We ran advertising for the Fourth of July, which includes the balloon rally. We ran advertising, under events right now, it's actually the Rent Raton, the car show fest, is kind of what we have under events. We're running events for Gate City Music Festival, outdoor recreation, the Schuler, some sustainability. And then also, we started running some events separately for MCMC. So for the month of June, we've had 112, over 120,000 people see advertisements about Raton and over 4,500 click on those advertisements to get more information about Raton and what we have to offer. The really neat thing about this is is we've spent $7,241. The grant we received gives us $10,000 a month. So $120,000 a year of advertising. The good news is, is that that's indefinitely. Really, there is no end to this grant as long as we continue to use the grant within the perimeters we're given and we keep up and we perform the way they like us to perform. And I'll talk about that. It's pretty much never ending. And so it's a really big boost, I think, for northeastern New Mexico. The one thing I wanted to show you is, at the very top here, you see a column that says CTR. And that's a click-through rate. So what percentage of people that see our advertisements are actually coming to get more information? That lets us know how relevant the ads we're running are and exactly, you know, if we're targeting the right audiences. Googles, you know, they say you have to have at least a 1% click-through rate. That is kind of the norm, the industry norm. This is our second month really running any kind of advertising. And we're averaging a 3.77%, which is extremely high, actually, for Google. Our quality score is high, which means our cost per click goes down. The higher the quality your ads are and your content is, the cheaper it is to actually get those clicks. And so, you know, we're two months in and I'm pretty sure that by next month, we'll be able to spend that $10,000 and get those clicks we were talking about, Jeff was just mentioning. So I did want to give you a little bit of a glimpse of what we're doing on the back end of things. As we've started to ramp up this project, I've been working with Jeff to really build content and start a website. So we all know this picture here. And this is the current picture of the website we go to. If you go to exploreraton.com, it redirects to the raton.gov site, which is a good site for government, you know? It gives you a lot of information about Raton, but not necessarily maybe the information tourists are looking for. So we've started to create a different Explorer of Raton. And if you look over here, you'll see that we drew our inspiration from the New Mexico True campaign. A lot of the colors we use are very similar. We're going for a very graphic site with content that is what tourists are looking for. You know, it's kind of driven. And we're going to, one big advantage we have using Google AdWords is the ability to run different ads to different regions. So we can add, run an ad for Texas that is something we know they'll respond to, and add to Colorado for something else, you know? And kind of see what people are interested in and then drive content on our website based upon what people are looking for. But this will be, and this picture here is the current picture. Like there will actually be a slider bar with five different pictures of different things to do in Raton. Jeff and I are under, we kind of operate under a very specific rule, and that's don't wait for perfect. So a year from now, I'm hoping that this is going to be a local face that we see here. We have to find a photographer and we need to get this going with a more local feel. However, we realize that we're looking at tourist season. You know, so if we can get a page up and running within the next, oh, three to four weeks, we can still catch some people coming to Raton. And that's kind of our goal, is to get this up and running as soon as possible. And so I've been building this. And you can see on the back of this page, actually, is some cards. So we'll have like a slider here and then there will be a bunch of different cards on the homepage that are represented in this picture. It includes like lodging. This will be the next big event coming to Raton. There's here a little map. What this is going to do is actually tie into the mobile app that Main Street has to do walking tours and different road trips in the area. That's a big push from New Mexico True. And so we're going to make sure that that gets worked into the site. You know, there's some information about historic First Street, restaurants, of course, some of the outdoor activities, a little bit of a western feel. We're hoping to, you know, loop in the NRA and some of the things over at Filmont here. And then of course, the Schuler Theater. And these charge, these can change. This is something that will change. But it's something that definitely represents Raton and what we have to offer to tourists. And so all of those will be linked to pages with more information, of course. And those pages will link out to individual organizations' websites and Facebook content. So it's all kind of one big web to get information to people. And one last thing I did want to mention is we did talk to the Lodger's Tax Board about using a tool that'll be used one of two ways. You can actually book your hotel stay from exploreraton.com. That's our main goal, is to make sure that there's not overhead for the local hotel owners. And so we're working with Jack Rabbit, a company to kind of come up with a quote for that or figure out how to embed it to where whenever you go to exploreraton.com, you go directly to each hotel's website. Because if you book at Expedia or Booking.com or any of those sites, they take 20% from our local hotels. Plus, that takes away from our Lodger's Tax, you know, that we collect. So in the big scheme of things, that would be something very good for us as well.
So we have volunteered to, I talked to the company, Jack Rabbit, and they gave us a list of clients to call so we can ask them the specific questions that we got from the Lodger's Tax group that night. And so we can have some first-person, you know, information. And so we'll go back to Lodger's Tax about this. But I didn't realize quite how much money the hotels were paying out where you get some hotel people fired up talking about what they pay.
I think, you know, $4,000 a month.
Yeah.
You know, that's money that's leaving local, you know, hotel establishments. So something that we're working towards.
So questions, anything about this process? Oh, and so one other thing about this way, what's in front of you today? So what we proposed to the Lodger's Tax Board is that, in fact, that we're not presenting ourselves as marketing experts and so forth, right? We're learning as we're going and we're trying to move really fast. So what we propose to Lodger's Tax Board is let's run this for 90 days. Let's, we'll come back monthly and present data to Lodger's Tax so they're up to date and we can adjust based on what they're seeing. And then after the 90 days, we'll present a comprehensive report. And at that time, if everything's green and we're doing a good job and everybody's happy, then we'll look for a monthly stipend somewhere in the neighborhood, probably of $2,000 a month to continue this and continue to expand offerings. There's other things we're not talking about today that we can start doing that it's just a lot of fun. There's a lot of potential here. And so I think as we have a great partner at the Chamber now that's very attuned to data and social media and digital stuff. So I think together, when we get our heads together, we'll really start to knock this out of the park.
Yeah, I was present when you made the presentation with the Lodger's Board and I was really excited. And I think this is something that we've been wanting to do for quite a while. It provides us information and advertising.
I think from my perspective, Mayor, Commission, you know, our results on Lodger's Tax, the revenues have been pretty good over a couple of years and they're good currently. But we've questioned, are we making the best use of Lodger's Tax? And I think Lodger's Tax Board has asked those questions too. And I think a couple of things. I think this proposal answers a lot of those questions that I've been hearing in the time that I've been here the last three to four years. And we're also, we've talked about the importance of community partners to the City of Raton. And I think here you're seeing a lot of initiative by our community partners. Here, we're combining, you know, efforts of the Center for Sustainable Communities to land the Google grant. And I was, I didn't know how that would all play out, but I was really excited to hear that and I'm starting to see how it plays out. The Chamber is here and they're partners on this. And we've heard about the Main Street app and it's all kind of coming together. And so I think that recommendation of the Lodger's Tax Board, you have that, it's to fund the proposal. But I think that answers a lot of questions that they've been asking as well. And we're making better use of the Explore Raton tool. You know, when I look at that, it's okay about, you know, if you're a city manager and you're talking about municipal operations. But there was that marketing and promotion element that we weren't very good at. And I think this is, this is how we get better at that. But I'm excited about the community partners and the Chamber, the Center, Main Street. I think they're, I'm really excited about where we're going. And in recent time, these things have really developed. So I want to say thanks to everyone involved.
Definitely. Collaboration is the best way to go.
I'll make a motion to accept a recommendation from the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to accept the recommendation of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board for $8,000 to be given to the Center for Sustainable Community. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Deliverate an act on legislative funding used for chip seal recommendations.
Mayor, Commission, I had reprinted a memorandum that goes back to September of 2016 in regard to the use of capital outlay for chip seal project. And we had asked for your concurrence back at that time. And that was voted on here by the Commission. And the issue on that has just been, number one, we got into some cold weather and we're not able to do that. But the grant agreement was very late in coming out of the DOT. So we've got the grant agreement now. We've gone through some of the processes as far as obligation of the funds through their process, environmental review. And we anticipate that we'll start on the work in July. So I guess there is an action that we would recommend. But I'd just point out that the Commission did previously authorize the work and took action. And the reason that we point this out is we anticipate procuring the materials and the work off of state purchasing agreements, current state purchasing agreements. And so just to update you on some of the things that have transpired since, we talked about this in September. We had planned to purchase aggregate from a supplier who no longer has that agreement. And we have, there is a different supplier that has a state contract that said he would supply the aggregate. The only difference is the price is higher. And so we would not come back to you with an award of a bid or that kind of thing that we typically would do. We would just procure off of these state purchasing agreements. And as outlined in the memo, there are three separate agreements. One is for the aggregate, one is for the asphalt product, and one is for the work. So those are in place. We've talked to those vendors. We're ready to go. We do want to, you know, remind you that, and get your endorsement of that. And maybe we want to take a vote on that because in the memo, we talked about costs and quantities. And I would like to amend that by saying that I'd like your okay to, first of all, we're going to spend a little more on aggregate. We're going to spend the entire capital outlay, $150,000 on chip seal. That's my recommendation to you right now. And we'd probably hold back on Savage Avenue, but we would probably throw in a portion of Buena Vista Street and Sugar Reed Street. And it would be two blocks of each. And just generally, those are in the vicinity of St. Joseph's Church. So I'd like to do those two streets. Those would be the revisions to what we talked about in September. And looking for your approval to proceed with that. We would proceed after July 1 with the procurement.
I'll make a motion to approve legislative funding for the use of chip seal recommendations.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve legislative funding used for chip sealing recommendations. Can we roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
May I approve him, Sagata?
Yes.
Yes. City managers report?
Mayor, Commission, I would report that we are at the end of the old fiscal year and we're at the beginning of the new fiscal year. And that means that Treasure and her staff are in the process of truing up and closing out some old fiscal year things. And I think we've really done that with the actions tonight. We did begin the audit process for the upcoming year. The auditors were in Raton for several days. We conducted an entrance conference with the mayor present. And they conducted several days of field work. That process will go on between now and November. And they'll be back several times during that period to conduct work here and as well as, you know, at their home office. So that process has commenced. We have prepared a request for bids for construction of the Taxiway A project, Taxiway Alpha. The Commission did approve a grant agreement with New Mexico DOT State Aviation. Recently, that's been submitted. They are in their process of executing that agreement. In addition, we're requesting bids for the construction of Taxiway Delta. That is a new runway construction. And the Commission had approved at special meeting a separate grant agreement for Taxiway Delta. Taxiway Alpha, there is federal money involved. 90% of the project is funded by the FAA. In the case of Taxiway Delta, there is no FAA money. It's 90% state aviation, 10% City of Raton. So we anticipate opening bids in late July on both projects. Those are both separate requests for bids, separate plans and specifications and bid documents. We plan to bring that to the Commission for your consideration in late July, early August. So we'll report back to you on that issue. I would report on the completion of construction of the Troy Street Firehouse. There was a grand opening on the Troy Street Firehouse and it now is occupied and in use. The last of the construction was parking lot construction. So that facility is now being used. If commissioners have not had a chance to look at the facility, you're sure welcome to come by. We'll go down and we'll look at that. As a part of that, we have also begun renovation of the Clark Street Firehouse. And that's where, that's the primary firehouse that has been occupied for many years. And now we'll move the crew to Clark Street, I mean, to Troy and begin some renovation work on Clark Street. So that work has been undertaken here this week by the contractor, Stoven Construction. Going back to the hailstorm in 2016, we had some damage to the roofs on city buildings. And after the hailstorm, we had our insurer come and look at those. And that process has really taken place up until now. But the insurer, the insurer has authorized a contractor to come and work on several buildings where we have actual leaking going on where we have actual leaking going on and potential for damage inside the building. So the most serious one is the library and we have had water come in and, and caused some damage to walls inside the library and we've had to move some books, some artwork, those kind of things. So there is a contractor in town that's putting that together. We'll also look at the seniors building in which has a, a serious roof issues. Convention Center, we have ongoing leaking. And so those three buildings, we'll, we will work with the insurer to make sure that there's not ongoing damage. There was hail damage to many of the city buildings and we'll work with them and work out a plan as far as how we proceed with those. But here in City Hall, there's not really leaking going on when there is damage to the roof. So those are in a special category that we want to get to first. I did receive notification, we had submitted an application for municipal arterial program funds as to New Mexico DOT for the Hospital Drive Reconstruction Project and we were successful in receiving that funding. It was funded in the total amount of $200,000. That's $150,000 through DOT and $50,000 city of Raton. So that would involve a reconstruction of, of Hospital Drive. And the thing that we get a lot of comments on is the dip section. And, and that's at the old location of 555 and when 555 was relocated further north, that dip was left. And so it's a different traffic situation now and while it's been that way for more than 20 years, we get complaints on that. So part of the project would be to, to come up with a corrective solution for the dip. Now, the drainage has to be accounted for too. So the drainage pattern is not going to be altered, but part of the street would be removed to moderate those approach grades. What we anticipate is that we'll see a grant agreement on this probably late summer, early fall. There will be some design work required and I would think that it would be late spring or early summer of 2018 when we ask for bids on this. There's a, a little work to be done. And it'll, it'll fall in the same category really as that capital outlay. By the time we get the grant agreements in place, we're going to be in cold weather. So we'll, we'll look to come out with this, oh, next spring, report back to the Commission on that. Along those lines, we also received word that we were awarded funding under the Cooperative Agreement Program. And same thing, we would expect a grant agreement about that, that timeframe and really look at 2018 doing the work. The amounts there, the total grant amount is $44,815. $33,611 state New Mexico, $11,204 city of Raton. That's less than we had applied for and less than the, the resolution that you had, had executed with our matching funds. But I do have the grant agreements that came in the mail today. We'll work on those and, and get those back. Lastly, Mayor, I'd like to acknowledge a, a couple of people. Number one, Sean Lurch was the CEO of Miners Colfax Medical Center for the past five years. Sean has relocated back to Wisconsin and he's left us at MCMC. I've, I've worked with Sean during much of that time and I can tell you that, I, I point that out because there have really been some exceptional improvements to MCMC. Sean was instrumental in the rural health clinic getting constructed and operational and I don't know what we would do without that now. It's hard to believe we, we didn't have that several years ago, but he's really worked on the black lung clinic, the pulmonary clinic and expanded that. He has, we didn't complete that, but laid the groundwork for the behavioral health clinic. And I just want to acknowledge Sean's contribution in the five years that he was here. There now is a gentleman, Bo Beams, will serve as the interim CEO of MCMC while a permanent search is going on. But I did want to acknowledge Sean's contributions to the community and say thanks to Sean. I would also acknowledge the efforts of Pat Vehill. Pat Vehill is our Public Works Superintendent. He will retire on Friday after more than 26 years of service. And Pat has really been an asset to me in, in, in doing my job. He covers a lot of ground very effectively and so I'd like to acknowledge Pat and say thanks for all of his efforts through the years. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. And I would like to acknowledge and, and thank all of the department heads for being, being so diligent in keeping under budget this year. I would really applaud their efforts and I thank them for myself and the Commission. We are very proud of what you've been able to do and you've helped the city stay afloat.
I will sort of pass that along to them. Everyone has, has really taken that seriously, trying to be fiscally responsible to the public. It's something that we talk about at, at every department head meeting. So I will sort of pass that along to them.
Thank you. Is there anything else to come before this body?
If not, meeting adjourned.